Depression is you don't feel anything. You're completely shut off. So again, if somebody's perpetually in that state, why live? But you can come out of it. You can do it if you're doing the right thing. I did it. It took me three years, but I did it.
It's like you want to not be in that position anymore, but you have to want to do it.
Oh my gosh, you're so right.
Well, you have to have ambition or drive to get out of it, right? But and I almost equate this. It sounds like a weird comparison, but I compare it to working out.
Yeah.
Like I, yeah, like I know that working out makes me feel better eventually, not in the moment. And I know that I need it and everything.
But you hate it.
And the book, and I hate it. And I hate it throughout. And I hate it throughout. Yeah.
That's exactly right. Yeah.
All right. What's up, guys? Welcome back to B Frank Podcast. Today we're doing a special thing, the co-host with Tony, Malo.
Hello.
And myself, and then we have a special guest. He's a everything. Like, explain who he is.
Everything that Adam Rob does. Uh, I met Adam as an actor and then he became uh, a wedding videographer, photographer, then producer, those goes at the same time, then a producer in commercial world. Then it moved into um, train depot owner slash wedding venue. No, you say that, right?
Sure.
Yeah, sure. Then film producer again. And then city councilman.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna cover a lot of stuff, you know, like those kind of stuff in profession. We talk about money. We talk about mental health and we talk about job description. I think everyone should listen to it. We had a great conversation. So let's get started.
Well, we'll ask him the trivia really fast.
Oh, yes.
How many, when I campaigned, how many people answered the door wearing no pants?
What?
I said way high. I said way.
When I was campaigning, how many people answered the door wearing no pants?
Like two hundred?
That was the same number.
I said two hundred and thirty six.
It was three.
Three.
Yeah. How many dogs bit me?
Two.
Oh, bang on. Yeah. It was like a, it was a bigger dog mix in the back of my knee. And then, and then a Chihuahua bit me on my.
They bite everybody.
Oh, is that really work to go to those door?
I won eighty percent.
Really?
Yeah.
I guess it works.
So he's gonna write a book about all these individual experiences. I'm telling you around.
Already started.
Around election time, you could just take this whole segment, turn it into just a whole thing about what he does.
Yeah.
It's very interesting. I do have a whole new level of respect for like legitimate politicians, even at like a senate level. I've heard stories of how like, like kind of early on, even when they're having to fly back and forth between their state and like Washington DC. I mean, they're sleeping on couches at their office. It's a grind. They're not really making a lot of money. And it's like, you, you work your way to the top. I'm not saying they're all like angels. Listen, but.
More respect than.
I have more respect. Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
That it's a tough, a tough gig. Yeah. And I like the ones that like talk about what happened on the floor and like what they voted and why, even if I don't like. Like for instance, like one of our senators now, not a fan of his at all, but he has like a live Facebook feed. And so after he comes into his office, he turns on and he was like, this is what happened today. This is what I voted. This is why I voted for it. These are all the ins and outs that they're not trying to tell you on the news of all these extra little. I had to vote yes on something I didn't like, but it's because they had all these other laws that were, what do they call them earmarks?
Yeah, pork barrel earmarks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So he, so at least he explains. Yeah. I still don't like him, but I respect the fact that he's like, okay, I'm doing what I, I'm supposed to do. I think.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have earmarks or anything like that really on city level, thankfully. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, cause that's when he gets, I think, hairy. That's when he gets messy.
The way it works in the local level and I'm, it's called strong manager. The strong mayor, a strong manager and we're strong city manager, meaning so like the city manager and the staff at city hall, planning director, et cetera, they'll come up with like intricate plans and the council just like gives approval, votes for it to actually go in and work like the oversight kind of thing. So I'm not actually sitting there writing, well, I say that. I have written like two bills, as you would call them ordinances or whatever. You can do, I can write them, but I'm just saying traditionally city hall will write them.
Oh, got it.
You know, the.
But you're putting them to vote or.
Right. But we're the ones that's looking at them and saying like, no, I'm not voting for that. Or yes, I'm voting for that. Yeah, I can write it myself, but I've only done like two. Chat GPT, that thing.
Chat GPT.
Write an ordinance for this. Make it heartfelt, not too much. Make it seem serious and.
I'm new to chat GPT. Are you using?
Yeah, I use that all the time.
Redu for a small town.
I'm still manually doing these emails, man.
Really?
I gotta learn. I gotta figure out how to do it. Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's thank God. Honestly, like I don't speak English perfectly. So like whenever I like write up to like email to my client, I always had my assistant, hey, look over my English, you know?
You speak English really well though.
Oh, thank you. I mean, like, but I could just like, I just say chat GPT, hey, fix my English and it fixes it.
You say fix my English?
Yeah.
Right.
Then they'll, they'll do it. And then like, it's like, cool, you know? Then I just send it out and then people, you know, I use grammar and then chat GPT at the same time. But text, I don't use it. So, you know, whoever getting texts from me, you know, coming from me.
It's really him. It's not the robot. It's not the robot.
Oh my gosh. Okay. Well, ask your five year question. We didn't get there.
Oh yeah. So like, uh, I do end of the this segment, uh, I ask all the time, the reason I ask this question is like, I've been doing podcasts with like a different people, right? Like you're, you'll be like, yours would be like fifty seven or something, but like, uh, five year goals for me.
Dang.
Uh, five year goal for me is like, I wanna write a book without me writing it. So I wanna do you talking about like five years ago, like advice to yourself, right? And then I will ask you like, what, how do you see yourself five years? And now I will contact those people individually and then I'm gonna take, I, I have a picture from five years ago, today, five years from now. And then I wanna write the coffee table book of like life book or whatever. So it would be kinda written by people. And I think that all the, every page will have a people's like fifteen years span, uh, ten years span of story. So that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm kinda asking. Yeah. So I don't have to write anything. So it'd be good. But anyways, uh, two thousand eighteen, it'd be five years ago. What were you doing back then?
Um, I had boughten, I just, just boughten, just boughten. I had just purchased the train station in two thousand eighteen and I I had been living in Guthrie then for two or three years, so still kinda new. And I'd just purchased the train station and I don't even think I was even at High Five yet. Oh, no. Yeah, I was, I was gonna start High Five later on in that year as well. So that was a lot of life. Yeah, the advertising agency I worked for. So I had a lot of life changes going on there and that's where I was.
What would you say to yourself? What did you say to yourself? What advice would you give it to yourself five years ago?
Where you are now. Cause you were in big transition pre kids. Oh, which by the way, can I just put in on this? His kids are award winning, cute kids. Literally win awards.
We gotta bet the big show here.
So pre children.
Yeah, I'm pre children. I'm married though. Oh gosh, what would I tell myself back then? Gosh, well, see, I was in a heavy, I was in heavy uh, mental depression then too. I had extreme anxiety and depression back then. I even had to go to St. Anthony's Mental Hospital for a while.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And so I was really heavily, I think I was on meds then too. I was in and out of therapists and stuff like that. So.
Did you check yourself into the hospital? Like you were?
Yeah, I was having an episode.
How long were you in?
Only like a week. Where, where they don't, they don't sell it like that though. They, oh, you just go see a doctor.
And then you go in there and the gates.
Yeah, they'll help you out. You know, you might, you might, you might just stay in a room or something and you go in there and they're like, you're not leaving until we say you can leave your liability. You come in in handcuffs on a chair.
Yeah.
And then everybody who comes in, it doesn't matter what your issue is, you go straight to the right this window and they give everybody meds. They drug everybody for like liability.
Wow.
Cause you're in there with, there's three types of people that go into those mental wings. You have anxiety, depression people, which was me. You have bipolar and schizophrenics, and then you have substance abusers. Substance abusers were okay. They'd leave you alone. They're just.
They're in their own.
They're just having a huge episode in their head.
And they're probably in some, or they're in some form of detox and so their brain, chemicals are.
Right. But they'll leave you alone. They really, but they're the ones that's really like pacing a lot and stuff.
Yeah. And you're with all of them?
Yeah, you're on one wing together in a, in a, on a floor level.
Wow.
Yeah. And it's like prison, like you can't have shoelace strings. You can't have this. You can't have bars on the windows. You can't leave. You don't have cell phones. You can't have anything sharp edges. You're not allowed to have soap.
And you're next to the people that are having truly chemical mess up and you're just in a big transition in your life and you're what would consider on the mild version of needing some guidance.
Yeah, the substance people.
Full schizophrenics.
The substance people would be like, hey, I'll give you anything on my plate if you give me your cookie and your coffee. So they could get a high of some kind. So sugar high or caffeine high. So they'd be like, yeah, so I'll give you anything on my plate. If you give me your cookie, and they get all the cookies together. So then they could just like garble them together.
Wow.
I get some kind of kick. But they wouldn't like mess with you, you know what I mean? And they'd all come in with like charcoal on their face. Cause I guess the police shove that down your mouth if you're ODing.
Oh, right. To absorb them.
To absorb the stuff. So you knew, you knew them when you saw them. Uh, but the people who had like, you know, mental chemical imbalances would be the ones that like, they'd have to get tackled a lot and like restrain.
Yeah, they're like truly terrified in there.
Yeah, I remember being, we, we would have um, movie every evening and we'd watch Mrs. Doubtfire and a guy had had an episode.
The same, the same every night?
No, I just remember that's what we, that's what we were watching that night was.
That's gonna make you.
That's what we were watching that night, Mrs. Doubtfire.
Oh, okay.
And one of these guys who had like an episode earlier, we had to be like tackled and, and straitjacketed. They wheeled him out on a bed to watch it. And so we're all sitting there watching it and he's in the middle on a straitjacket like. That's a good part.
Oh my gosh.
Straight jacketed in a bed, you know? It was trippy. I ended up getting special privileges.
Okay.
I was what was called high functioning. So I could get crayons and stuff like that.
Oh my gosh, Adam. How did we go this whole podcast and not go into?
Go mental illness. Yeah. So I would get crayons.
Yeah.
No pencils. Oh God. Cause.
That would be, yes.
Yeah.
And this, like I said, this was voluntary. This was you saying, I need extra help. I'm gonna trust the Oklahoma mental health.
Very misleading. And I met other people who said that. You're right.
Yeah.
It was very misleading. They didn't tell you it was gonna be that. They made it sound like, just like you went.
Cause you have, you have insurance, right? Your private insurance. Like you have means of private care.
Yeah.
And it sounds like you're going into a state hospital. It's like the way you're describing this.
Oh, this is all what happened. Yeah. And I thought, I thought I was just gonna go in there for an evening and sleep in there. Nurses would come, you know, help you. No, they didn't tell you it was like a prison.
Regulate your medicines and like.
Yeah, yeah. They didn't say it was like a straight up, like prison. And.
Oh my gosh.
I'm not a prison, but you know what I mean?
Yeah. Well, you're not, you weren't.
Wait, don't describe it. No, hell, no, God, no. No, you could not leave unless.
And so Abby, and so your wife's like coming and trying to check in on you and she, and they're like, oh, we'll let you know in a week.
You got visitation. She could come in for an hour a day or thirty minutes at a certain time and come in, no phones, nothing. So you had payphones. You had to memorize numbers. You'd call out and you couldn't go anywhere and.
This makes people who have, need mental health, like health help not wanna.
Yeah, they don't wanna go, I guess.
Yeah, no. Uh, and like I met other people said the same thing. They were like, gosh, they did not tell me it was gonna be like that.
That's not help. Cause that could make someone that is dealing with anxiety, depression that maybe at like, let's say at a a lower high functioning level become unfunctioning because you're flipping out. I would think that.
And the people like.
Me in that environment, talk about my anxiety would shoot up.
Yeah. And the people like with my problems were worse being in there.
Yeah. Yeah. That's what I'm saying. Yeah.
The substance abusers, it was good for them because they don't have anxiety. I'm not trying to generalize. They're not there for anxiety, depression. They're there just because they were on drugs or.
They're there to detox.
Right. So they weren't like flipping out really, but the anxiety people's like, this is making me worse.
Yeah.
And I mean, well, I'm just sitting there. I can't remember what I was doing. This new guy came in. They're sitting him in there, checking him in. They got his handcuffs off and everything. And one of the girls I was talking to the whole time, she just goes over there and just starts beating him up. And they restrain her. She's put in a room, straitjacketed and all that. I saw her the next day and I was like,
What happened?
What did you do to that guy? Cause she's like talking to me all normal like we were before. She goes, oh, he reminded me of my brother.
Wow.
And I go, do you hate your brother? He says, no. It's just like, okay. It was like, okay, I just left it alone. But I, I saw.
That's so reactive.
I saw at least you see like five people get just tackled with the either the restraining.
You lucked out by not looking like someone's brother, father, ex-boyfriend.
Right. Something. But yeah, they get like, but mostly the people who got tackled like that and had issues and had to be restrained and straitjacketed and stuff like that, were the people who had schizophrenia or bipolar, mainly schizophrenia. Yeah.
But do you?
But you're mixed in with.
Yeah, you're mixed in with them. Yeah. So they're going around being like, again, spaceships. Yeah, yeah. Spaceships, aliens, you're, you know, you're all gonna die. Like they, they clearly have mental like severe mental issues.
It needs to help them.
Yeah. And, and those are the ones that would then wig out and they'd have to be restrained and stuff like that a lot.
Was that hindsight? Is that helped you to went there or?
That was the beginning of my mental health journey. Um, that didn't really help anything at all. And then when I got out, uh, it took me about three years to recover fully.
Three years. What, what did you do?
Uh, I tried like, I mean, they wanted you to go through the system. So like go to this therapist, take three different medications, you know? Um, which is funny, like every, only one therapist really helped me in a way, but you think like, gosh, you could get, do what the movies do, like, well, let's dissect this and look into it. I'd never had a therapist that actually would do that.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, like they wouldn't do anything.
It would just, it was medicine.
You'd go like, you'd go like eleven sessions and they just, I was just talking to them. They're not, they're not really asking questions. They're not like, well, let's, let's, let's look into that. Why do you think that that, what happened in your childhood? Yeah. What happened in your childhood? Why that would lead, they wouldn't do any of that.
Really?
Yeah. And, and I was like, okay, I'll try another one. And then another one. I went to like four, including the one that I saw right after getting out of the hospital.
Wow.
And no, yeah, there was no, I, I was just strange till that change, you know?
Were they psychology or psychiatrists that you were seeing? So those were medicine driven versus like family there or?
No, one of them was.
Cause there's differences, right?
Yeah, there is. Yeah. It was a difference in like a psychiatrist, counselor and stuff like that. I tried it. They, they were all in there.
Finding therapist, good therapist is hard.
Yeah.
I went, I went through like six.
Oh, you went as well.
Yeah, like I just went through a bunch and I walked out on so many therapists. Cause I didn't like that it's opposite of me. And I didn't like the person dissects me with like a textbook style.
Oh, now that's true too.
What?
So like they have like a personality test from one through six or whatever. And then they let me take the test and then I go to a therapy session. And then I'm like certain number of like five or six or whatever. And then I got started saying stuff, oh, because you're a five. And then like.
They try to put you in a box to make you be able to recognize.
Exactly. And then like I say, one more thing. Well, okay, whatever. And then I got started saying it. And then I told the therapist.
Put your enneagram or something.
Yeah. If you say that to me one more time, I'm gonna walk out.
Right.
That's what I told her. And then she said, well, because you say that because you're five.
That's good for you. Real good for you though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause they are, that, that's part of that same outlook or concept right there is the same with why they do drugs all the time too. It, it's just such a methodicalized like they wanna make it all be really easy where they're not having to like dive in and dissect. It's just, oh, you're this, that means you have this, you take this pill.
Yeah.
You're this, you're on number five. This is why you're, this is what that is. Boom, boom, boom. There's like no like, it's all shallow level and I don't, I don't like that.
That's tough.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like my therapist now because she's like very blunt and honest. And if I'm like talking about my problem or whatever, I'm like kinda complaining or something. Well, that's your fault. You know, you're being like a little bitch or something.
Hey, sometimes you need that. Sometimes you need that.
Yeah, no, I mean.
Yeah, and I was like.
And you're like, it's because I'm a five.
Sometimes you need that though.
Yeah.
Oh my gosh.
So yeah, I go, I go to her, I see her every other week or something. I mean, that's, that's been super great, you know?
Yeah.
But it's just like, I, I can't, I, whenever you explain to me like finding a therapist, it's just hard, you know?
It sounds like for you, I'm wondering if like part of your journey was because the system is broken. Like, was it part of it? Like, this is what the system's gonna give me. And so obviously it's on me to figure out my own.
Oh, yes. There, there was.
Like, I can't go to the hospital again because that's prison.
Never going there.
I don't wanna be on medicine, the way that they, so I have to figure this out myself, right? Like you went through.
Yes, you're exactly right. It made me have to be like, I'm gonna have to do this on my own. I'm gonna have to figure it out on my own, which is scary and a dark place to be.
Not how that's supposed to go.
No.
What did you do? The therapy and then what, what else did you do to like get out of that?
Therapy didn't really get me out.
So you couldn't find one. You needed.
Couldn't find one. I need to call your friend now.
So she can tell you being a little.
I kinda learned that like, so my specific situation, medication, I mean, what, if you get the, there's a thing called a genetic test. It doesn't mean like where your heritage is from. It's where they swab your DNA. And they'll send it to a lab and the lab will come back with every available medication on the market and say, this is how your metabolism, based on your body is gonna handle these meds. And you'll have a red, yellow and green. So if you take a pill, it's in the red, your body's gonna, your brain's gonna wig out and your body's gonna have a lot of side effects.
That's really interesting.
Yeah, a lot of people don't know it and it's the greatest thing ever. They have yellow, meaning like it'll help you. Might feel a little queasy though. It's yellow. Green means your brain's gonna like it. Your body's gonna like it based on your specific DNA.
It's a genetic test.
Genetic test. And, and it was perfect. Cause I was on different meds before. And yeah, I would have all kinds of different side effects. She put me on this. I had my green list, took one in the green. It worked perfect. But at the end of the day, that's only like masking the problem. No.
Right.
If you're bipolar or schizophrenic, you need it.
That test keeps people from crazy side effects if you, yeah.
Yeah, that test lets you know which meds to take if you're gonna be on them.
Yeah.
So, but in my experience, my opinion, i- if you're bipolar or schizophrenic, yes, be on your medications, take that medication, stay on it. But if you're not, you need to look at medication as like, this is just to pull me out of the chaos. Or I can then try to do the real work. I want my problem is, it's not a long term, the meds will fix you.
Right.
It's just, it's kinda like a nuclear bomb that just, it destroys your happiness and your sex.
Yeah.
And your anxiety.
Been on it before. Yeah.
Yeah, it just kills your whole thing. Yeah, exactly. You're just numb. And so you better use that moment to like figure out, okay, this is what I'm gonna be doing to, to, to figure this out, to get a plan. What, what's my actual issue? Like what's, what am I struggling with? And so when I started doing that, I then weaned myself off of pills and got off. So I've been off for years. Hadn't gone to a therapist or had to use medication in a long time. And then I just started the mental health journey, you know? Uh, I think a lot of my issue was just us having the existential crisis when we grew up. So how old are you?
Thirty two.
Okay. Well, when we grew up. No, when, when, when we, when we grew up, and it's, it was worse now than ever. So it counts.
Yeah.
Um, we were like, it was like beaten to our heads. Like what matters in life is your job, your career, going to college. That's what matters. It's not your family. It's not God, country, family, all that kinda stuff.
Well, it, it was, it was said that it's God, family, country, but like in reality.
Yeah, it's not.
Right.
Right. It was like.
The day to day practices were.
Right.
Get a job, go to college, get a good job.
Right. That's what matters. If you don't, you don't have a soul.
Right.
You're gonna go to hell. Right, right.
Own your first home at a certain age.
Right. And it was just beat into our heads from elementary school onward, that that was what you needed to do. And it wasn't those other things. And so the problem is.
Yeah, to be happy and poor was not a thing.
No, it was not. It was like, just get a job, get a career, whatever. Cause people our parents age, they did have those purposes. And then.
It's also the boom of like corporations and.
Yeah. And they were out working and the people who had degrees were doing great and they weren't. So they're like, damn it. I'm gonna instill that in my kids hardcore. You better go to college and get it. And they didn't instill the inner stuff simultaneously.
Right.
As much.
No, that's right.
And I think that's why today, there's a lot of suicides among young people. They get out and they do get a career. And then they arrive there and they realize, oh, this is not satisfying me. This is not make me feel complete. And what is the point then?
Yeah.
No, no, that's it.
Like, what is the point? If this is not gonna satisfy me? Cause like a lot of times, the journey there, you're thinking like, oh man, once I arrive there. Yeah. Yeah. The journey itself is what keeps you going because you think once I arrive, I will arrive in this bliss.
Yeah.
It also comes from the belief system that money will buy happiness.
Yeah, all of it. Absolutely.
And that is.
That's what that is.
Eighties, nineties kid right there.
That's right. That's right. Yeah. The career status, the money, you will be happy. And then they're getting there and they're either consciously or subconsciously realized. Yeah. And they realize that I'm not.
Right.
And they're like, and there's nothing else. Why be here?
Yeah.
I think that's part of the suicide rate going higher. So I had to go through that as my, as well. What is the point? I turned agnostic during that timeframe. I didn't know if I really believed in God or not. It was a journey on every front.
Oh, wow.
Didn't leave the house, mastered it really well.
Were you still working at High Five at the time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was doing all that.
You were doing, and so probably not to help and no, nothing against marketing and advertising, but that means that you basically went from this filmmaker that you talk so passionately about, car rides, film festivals, the thing, right? To doing it at a corporate level. So now you're getting paid.
Right, right, right. Yeah.
Nice figures, right? Nice day rates to do commercials that not passionate about, but you're producing and doing all the thing, which is, seems like the thing you wanna do.
Right.
Now you're getting to do what you love, which is something I struggle with too. It's like, I'm doing exactly what I've always wanted to do, but now it's a job.
That's right. It went away.
It went away.
Yeah.
And so now I have to struggle to find the passion of the corporate job.
That's right.
Yeah.
It, it, it tapers off like.
It's hard. Yeah.
So I, I had said in my mind, I'm like, hmm, no, I'm not like, I don't even wanna do movies anymore. I don't care. You wanna be famous when you're like eighteen.
Right, right.
And then at this time I'm in my thirties and I'm like, God, I don't even like to watch them anymore. And then a career, boom, right in my life. That's where the divine thing.
That's what I was gonna say. That's where one could say God said.
He goes, oh, you don't want it anymore.
I have a, I have a job for you.
And you're not vain anymore. Here you go.
You're not vain anymore. Yeah.
Yeah. You want it. Now, now you, you sincerely don't want that for vanity reasons. I will give it to you is what kinda happened.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So that, yeah, that's part of it.
That's great.
Yeah, that's kinda part of it. Yeah. I instantaneously had a, a career, movie career when I didn't want it anymore. And, uh, and I'm still on that journey now. I'm not agnostic anymore.
Right.
And.
Now you're probably open to all of the options out there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I have a different look on life. Um, I'll never be the same, but that's a, but I mean that in a good way. There's like, like a maturity, like how like going to war, somebody's never the same.
Right.
They have a lot of PTSD, you know? I'll never be the same, but it's, it's a maturity.
It went, you had to go through that.
Yeah, I had to go through it. At the time, you, you, you want it to go away.
Yeah.
Only when you've gone through it, looking back, you're like, boy, that made me better. But at the time you don't.
Oh, it's terrible.
You don't know that.
So with the advice of five years ago, so this is at the, so five years ago, you were at the beginning of that journey.
What would you say?
Yeah.
You know what's funny?
Buckle up, buddy. It's gonna be a tough ride, but you'll be all right.
I, I could go deep with something. I don't think, I don't know if you guys will get it. I've tried to explain to somebody before. When you go through severe depression, what people don't realize is that it's not that you are in pain. It's that you have the inability to feel pain or anything at all. That's what real depression is. When people are like, oh, my spouse left me. I mean, I'm depressed. Ah, I, not taking that away from you.
That's grief.
That's great. That's right. That's grief. True depression is there's the inability of anything.
Not. Yeah. I used to call it, um, I just wanna not.
Yeah.
Or like, not what? And I'm like, don't know. Just not. It's not really live, not die, just not. Like, can I just not today? Can I not this week? I would go through long phases of that.
Really?
Just not wanting to not. And I couldn't describe like that. What does that mean?
Well, when you're, when you're, cause that's why people are like, well, if you're depressed, do things you like. You don't get it. I can't like anything.
You just wanna not.
Right. So imagine like if your taste buds, right? If they were gone and you taste food, you would, you're not, you have the inability to taste it. So if you're like, oh, you need to add more sugar. You don't get it. It doesn't matter how much sugar you add or what kind of steak it is or what the, what kind of seasonings you put on it. If you don't have taste buds, you're not gonna feel it. You have the memory of what it used to taste like, but that memory isn't gonna make you feel anything.
Right.
That's what it is to have depression is you don't feel anything. You're completely shut off. So you can stimulate all these things. So again, if somebody's perpetually in that state, why live? And that's part of the anxiety depression mold. And if you look at suicide notes, I'm big on reading suicide notes. Because I'm looking for these key words and they all have the same thing in there. Numb, inability to feel, can't feel anything, stuff like that.
Yeah. And you say suicide notes? Is what you said? What do you mean by that? Yeah, and you say suicide notes, is what you said? What do you mean by that?
When people take their own life tragically, they, they leave notes, I'm reading their notes.
Oh.
And, uh, from a, from a perspective of trying to see if I see those.
Those same.
Things, and they're there.
Those patterns.
Yeah, they're all there. Can't feel anymore.
What am I doing?
Yeah, can't do that. And, um, like, problem is, hope is a feeling too. So.
If you don't have it.
If you don't have the inability to feel it, so even though you know like, well, it'll get better maybe, well, I can't feel that hope, because I'm, again, I'm unable to feel any feeling.
Yeah.
So it just kinda goes deep down a spiraling, uh, trail there, I guess.
Yeah.
But you can come out of it. You, you, you can, you can feel again. It will, you can do it if you're doing the right thing. I did it. Took me three years, but I did it.
Well, the hard part about it is, it's like you want to not be in that position anymore, but you have to want to do it.
Gosh, you're so right. It's like, I don't wanna be here, but it's like, but you have to tell yourself you kinda do, right?
Like, well, you have to have ambition or drive to get out of it, right? But, and I almost equate this, it sounds like a weird comparison, but I compare it to working out.
Yeah.
Like I, yeah, like I know that working out makes me feel better eventually, not in the moment, and I know that I need it, and everything.
But you hate it.
And the book, and I hate it. And I hate it throughout, and I hate it throughout, yeah. So it's I, so I always tell people, cause my husband's a runner, and they say like, well, do, would you ever run? And I go, I want to want to run, but I don't want to run. But I want to wish that I liked it, but not enough that I can like it.
Yeah.
And I've, and sadly, depression is in that weird way of like, you don't wanna be here.
No, but you're right, but then it's like.
But you have to want something to practice it. It's a really weird spiral.
Yeah, and you gotta get out on your own head too.
Yeah.
Um, is it Rick Springfield that did Jessie's Girl, the song?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, he has a video out, you should see. He's, he's suffered it really bad. He hung himself.
Rick Springfield?
Yeah, and he, she hung himself in a shed. The rope snapped. And he took that as a sign that.
It, he had purpose.
Even though he said the same thing, he couldn't feel it.
Right.
Severe depression, suicidal tendencies. I mean, he hung himself.
If that's not divine intervention, if that doesn't snap you out of like an adrenaline, like gives you an adrenaline kick to get out of it, yeah.
Yeah, for me, it was like, um, like everybody else was telling me the advice, and then like friends and family and stuff, like get out of it, be happy, or do what you have, and all that stuff. I didn't wanna listen to it, I don't, I don't.
You're like, I'm aware, I'm aware I need to be happy. Uh, I get it, buddy, yeah.
I was just like, well, whatever.
Good luck with that, yeah, yeah.
You know, one night, you know, I was at the parking lot, and then just out of the office and the parking lot, like midnight, or one, one AM. And then like, literally YouTube videos say how to get out of depression.
Oh, nice.
It pops up.
It just pops up. I never watched YouTube that much before then. I just like went through like phone screens, scrolling through, and then I think it just popped up. And then the guy named is How To Beast. He does fitness, uh, also like a dating advice and all that kinda stuff.
This was a pot, like a podcast?
No, it was just like a blog, but also like, uh, kinda advice for like young men kinda stuff. And then I remember like I just watched maybe like fifteen minute video, like those like, I watched like six different videos that night, and like probably mo- more than that. And then one time, he says, he was in like a Spain in a, like a middle of nowhere, and then like, I remember, I can't find that video for some reason, but I could just like.
That adds the poetry, yeah. He never found it again. Never found it again, never found it again, yeah.
And then he says like, yeah, if you're like aware of you are going through hard times, and if you're working on it, that's like a ten percent of people actually do that. And then.
Yeah, being aware is the first.
And then if you're actually working on it, that's like one percent of ten percent of people. So like, he's like, I'm proud of you, bro. Like, that's what he said.
This is about mental health.
Yeah, and then like he was like crying, he was emotional, and then like he was talking to camera, probably he was talking to himself.
Yeah.
And then it just hit me, and then that, that day, that week, I start working out.
Oh, okay, good.
Oh, and that was, but that was the hit you needed in your, in your brain.
That was the brain, I needed it. And then also, I start going to gym, and then start watching YouTube, and then all the people is doing the fitness stuff, doing the self development, all that kinda stuff, start reading books and all that kinda stuff. And then, yeah, that's, that's pretty much why I started YouTube.
Really? And you've never found that video?
Yeah.
Dude, that's poetic though. Or maybe it'll pop up again.
Yeah, he, he got, he got like a.
And it was meant to be at that time. And I could see that probably any other time in your life, if that video would've popped up, you would've just glazed right over.
Yeah.
Like, you needed that moment of that darkest spot.
That day, like I just, was dark times, I was thinking about different things, and then, uh, yeah, I mean, literally that video saved my life.
Wow, okay to meet him.
People, you know?
Yeah.
Bring that up.
Yeah, and like, I didn't even think about at the time, say, I'm gonna do that for people, you know?
Right, right.
And then after like three years after that, or something like that, I'm like, hmm, I think I'll do it.
Yeah.
Do one, yeah, there's like a giving back there.
Yeah.
I'm always open to like telling anybody, clearly, I'm just saying it right here in front of the camera. I'm always open to telling anybody about it, so just in case they're struggling with something, I'm always there to talk with people about it.
Yeah, well, I was gonna, that was gonna leave me, what I was gonna ask you next is, now being in this kind of world of politics, is that something you could see yourself wanting to dive into? That like the Oklahoma, that, I don't, I wanna say the Oklahoma system, cause I only know of it, but like, that system sounds very broken. That is not how things should be.
No, it's not.
And is there, I don't know, other, other senators and, and people within a state level, that, that can be something that can be addressed? I'm saying it very vague, cause I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but.
Yeah, I think so, and I, I do, I do have a passion for like wanting to help in that category any way I can at a higher level.
God, it'd be another way.
Whether it be on a political level, or I've even said, gosh, we should do mental health, mental health seminars at my depot ballroom or something. I'm willing to do anything, yeah.
Yeah, and there's probably a world where people do need to go away for a week, but there's gotta be a way to do it without handcuffs and.
Yeah. The problem with that is they just need to, but it all comes back to like, is there the staff there to handle the different wings? And that costs more money. And then, the reason why they drug everybody is liability, so it all kinda comes back to like, well, if citizens weren't suing, it's all, there's levels of that, you know?
But also there's, drugging everybody just needs to also not be a thing in America. Yeah, yeah, it's getting.
Everybody got a Klonazepam.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's not helping anything, so.
No, everyone, everyone who came in.
But in like, if your clinic, everybody got the DNA test. So you don't see what I'm saying? Like, in your world, everyone got the, or everybody also got a, um, what's it called? The, yeah, the genetic test to make sure that the Klonazepam works for them. And then also maybe everybody gets the, and I don't know if this is a test, but like where you test your dopamine, adrenaline, um, all your happy hormones.
Yeah.
So that there's a world where Yosuke's going through, he's going through, and they go to your clinic and they test, and they go, oh, Yosuke, you're actually okay. You're just, your dopamine is in the negatives.
Right.
What we're gonna do is regulate the other hormones, let's get you through a week, and then let's find out if that's what it is. Do you know what I mean?
There's a doctor in California that's big on that.
Oh, really?
That I ran across. That's all he does is like, a lot of people are misdiagnosed, when the problem is, is like just dopamine and stuff like that.
Yeah, and your hits, yeah.
And that's, that needs.
And sometimes that happens if you take other medicine and drugs. Oh, well, drug drugs is, that's why they call it dope, right? It, it literally gives you a bunch of that, and then when you get off of it, it's then it like throws it off, right? It's literally called dope for a reason. Um, but then like, to have that, to have someone that says, you're okay, this is just way off. Let's get this level, and then let's get into therapy, or like get into stuff. Yeah, I just created my own mental hospital. No, I don't know. And again, maybe, and maybe I'm simplifying it way too much. I'm sure there's a doctor or therapist watching this that's like, she needs to shut up, she's annoyed if she's talking about.
Sometimes it works out, you know?
Yeah.
It's just, I think a lot of people complicated things and can't store, can't do anything.
And no pharmaceutical rep can come into your office and sell you anything. That should be the other rule of your hospital.
That stuff was so expensive.
Yeah.
And.
And they probably had pharmaceutical reps selling to, I don't, you know, to the place.
Are you on any SSRIs now?
What's that?
Or medication now?
Uh, non, not, 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 not mental health ones, no.
I'm not either.
I do take, every once in a while, I do take when I feel like getting like kind of that in the not phase again, where I just have nothingness feeling. Um, I take Sam E, which is like a vitamin, which is something in your body. And I'll always forget about taking it. And I'll go years and be fine, and then I'll get really like in this real darkness, and I'll, I'll normally mix something to my mother. My mom's like, have you been taking your Sam E? And I'm like, oh, yeah.
Yeah, cause there is.
It's also expensive. It's like fifty dollars for a month supply, I mean.
Yeah, cause they know it's in demand. Uh.
Yeah, but like literally in three days, it'll snap me out of it.
Yeah, see, like when I was in the heart of my depression, nothing would work. Exercise, no, nothing.
Something else was.
You were just in this, and that is all there was to it. There was no, cause everyone's like, you need to exercise, diet, take these meds.
Which those things do help.
They do, and they do help me now at a different level. But I was so deep, that does nothing. You just have this, and that is all there is to it.
Yeah, that's deep.
Right, you have, nothing helps you at all, ever. You, and you're numb for years, and you start thinking, yeah, why would I be alive when I'm a void? Like a robot, and you can't feel anything. And that's why the suicide comes in your mind.
Right.
Um, that stuff helps now. So whenever I'm feeling something now, I'm getting anxiety, I feel like a little bit of that depression, come on.
You knock it out.
Vitamins, workout, fine.
You kinda kick your, yeah.
Yeah, 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 kick it, kick your dopamine back up. You're totally fine. But, bah, when I was in the hardcore of that, nothing did it.
But that's where maybe the blood work and all the things should've come and play.
And that was the scariest thing, cause then you're like, and if I am, I, I, I don't wanna.
I can't keep doing.
You can't keep doing that.
Yeah.
Feeling nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, but then you started to have way, after a while, you have little inklings of like feeling something again. Even if it was something sad.
Right, it was something.
And you're like, oh, thank God.
That makes so much sense, yeah.
It finally came back, and then you're like, okay, great.
Now I can kinda get out of the, the hole a bit more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you start coming out.
Okay.
Thank God, cause you had no idea if you would or not.
Right.
And even one of my therapists, when I called her and told her about it, who was the good one, she was like, yeah, so I guess you're ner- uh, not nerve endings, but your.
Synapses?
I guess grew back, or came back or something, like what, she's like, I, I don't know, I guess, I guess it's possible to where you can.
She said, I guess it's possible?
Well, cause no one's really, I mean.
Nobody knows, right?
Nobody really knows, yeah, like, like, cause it wasn't anything chemical you could see on a test. It wasn't any of those things. It wasn't anything.
So they did all the testing, and they were like, you're firing off on all piss, cause you're doing fine.
There was nothing you could read that was indicating any issue. You just had, just had this. And it wasn't like a. If I had more money, it'd make me happy. Again, you could, you could give me a billion dollars cash, it would not have changed.
Yeah.
I would've known in the.
You had a job, you had a marriage, you had a home, you had the things.
I would've known in the front of my mind, this is something I'm supposed to value, and I do, but there, there would've been no.
Right.
Feeling whatsoever. You were completely shut off.
Yeah.
And so, uh, yeah, it's a terrifying.
Yeah.
Place to be in, and I was for a while.
Makes sense. And she's like, well, I guess you're great, guess my job's done. Yeah, and this was also something, going back to the five years ago to now, is psychedelics were like not as big of a deal then as they are now. Like a lot more common now, and people are using, what's, how do you say it? Psy- psychedelics?
Yeah, psilocybin or something?
Yeah, yeah, that's now becoming, that's basically what's in mushrooms, like psychedelic mushrooms.
Oh.
And so, so it's becoming, it was popular then, but it is really popular now, where people are microdosing, because they're finding that it, well, they found this out like in the seventies. That it, it connects your synapses in your brain, like it, it opens your, opens your horizons.
Yeah, like you can see like a different thing.
Like basically you have a trip.
Yeah.
And the trip is you coming, having that existential, like you're, you're basically connecting your brain. I mean, it's, it's.
So we're just going hardcore, like take acid. Take shrooms, heroin, whatever.
Well, now, but now, but now you can do it like in controlled substance, so like, like Special K, which is, what's Special K called, the, the medical version of it?
Ketamine.
So now you can get ketamine treatments. You go to a facility with a nurse, and they give you ketamine treatments, which is what Special K is, which is like a, like a.
Wow, I didn't know they were doing this.
Yeah, and they put on music, but literally a therapist sits there the whole time, just to make sure that you're, the trip's controlled. And you lay there listening to music, and you, it, it makes your brain start connecting, and that's for people with deep depression.
Trincolizer, you know?
Yeah, but it's just an incredibly controlled environment. Yeah.
Have you tried it?
No.
It's crazy.
No, no, I, I would tell you, I would totally tell you. No, I haven't. Because I mean, it's like a medical, like you gotta have insurance, and you have to go to a place, and you have to have so many treatments.
A doctor gives it to you, it's fine.
Yeah.
Methadone.
Well, I think of it as like expensive, yeah.
Like methadone is just meth, and the doctor gives it to you.
Literally, yeah.
Yeah.
It's synthetic, yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, so, in five years. What it, what is the next, what advice do you give yourself?
You know, during that, I did write a note to myself to read later on.
Really?
Yeah. Uh, something like, you know.
Like this was when you're deepest.
Yeah, something like, I, I, you knew you would get here and get out of it, or something like that. I haven't read it again. I need to.
Well, what would you, what would you write now? What did you say now?
Like if you're talking to yourself from then?
Um, gosh, I don't know, man, cause like, I'm getting to those, I, I, I do different levels now where you're, you're trying to get a goal done here, and you're arriving to that goal, so you're back into a place again of that goal doesn't fulfill you. Remember to keep going with what is truly the reason to be here. So, so when you, when I reach these physical goals, it's a constant reminder of going, making sure the other side stays level with it. Like so.
Stay level with it.
Yeah, yeah, the.
Make sure all the buckets are equally filled.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The money bucket, goal bucket, but also spiritually, mentally, family.
Yes, that's exactly right, yeah. Those all have to be at the same level.
Yeah.
And you're, you're letting one go back.
Yeah.
And keep, instead of keeping them all there.
All the buckets, yeah. You know who taught me the bucket idea? Matthew McConaughey. In a podcast, but he talks about making sure all the buckets are.
Are equally full, yeah. You have, you have to do that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So.
What about, how do you see yourself in five years?
So what year is that? Let's put a year on it.
Twenty twenty-eight, right? Twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Seems like forever.
I know, right?
Twenty twenty, and then we're here, or twenty twenty-four.
And now we're talking about twenty twenty-eight.
Um, what would I tell myself?
Well, like, well, how do you see it?
How do I see it in five years?
Yeah.
I hope my town is rejuvenated, rejuvenated like we were talking about. That's always a goal for my community. I'll probably be, I'll probably be at that spot career wise, where I am probably directing and acting and stuff that comes out in theaters. Uh, I mean, I'm doing.
Back to acting.
Yeah, yeah, I'm doing a theatrical now. I mean, that's where, I mean, I'm, I'm getting closer to the level where I can do that and put myself in those spots now. Um, at a bigger level. Um, I think that'll be happening then. My main goal though is, I, I just hope spiritually I'm where I need to be with the way the world is going. That's my main goal. And I think that, that's the one I have been paying the least attention to lately.
Yeah, like if things are gonna continue to go.
Go the way they are. Yeah, I, I, I hope in five years, my spirit is where it needs to be. And I'm always reminded too, I could like die tomorrow, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, man.
Yeah, if you die tomorrow, like are you, are you at the right spot?
Yeah, right, yeah. And I don't know.
Yeah.
But I do hope in five years that I, God, I hope I, I hope I figure something out by then.
Yeah.
More so than like a career, and more so than building.
All the buckets.
All the buckets, yeah. Well, I think just by like what Yosuke said a bit ago about the YouTube videos, the fact that you acknowledge it is the first step into being there. Like that's your focus right now. So I think it's a little natural. Well, the fact that like, the fact you're acknowledging that you want your spirit to be where it's supposed to be.
Oh, yes.
That is already.
Something.
The big step.
Yeah, right. The fact that you're already thinking about it, struggling with it.
Yeah.
Wanting that, that means you're already, yeah, that's a good point.
Say where your focus goes and energy flows. And so you're putting your energy into that and that's what's gonna happen.
Right. The fact that you're even thinking that is a good sign. Yeah, that's true.
And there's also, depending on how like woo woo you wanna be about it, I don't think that you're gonna die and your, in your spirit not be where it's supposed to be. Because everything is supposed to happen the way things are supposed to happen.
Oh, man.
That's deep.
Oh, my God. Gosh.
I've been saying that a lot of times, like, you know, everything will work out, but you know, nothing is like, what do you expect it to be, you know?
Right. It's gonna be what it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
Damn.
Which sounds so like brushing it off. Like I have, I have a, a friend who we all know, who the minute I say it is what it is or what it's supposed to be, he immediately gets frustrated. And he's like, no, that's just like giving up. That's just, I'm, I'm, I'm forcing the train to make it go the way I want it to go. And I'm like, yeah, it's gonna be what it's gonna be. It's like my way of, like, I can't overly focus on this at all.
Well, it's like those Twilight Zone episodes back in the day where like people would see into the future. And because they saw what was gonna happen in the future, they acted a certain way. And because it was that route they took, that ended up being why that ended up happening.
Yes, yeah.
Because they were trying to like.
Trying to avoid it.
Trying to avoid this, so they start going over here. And then that was what actually.
Triggered it.
Triggered that.
Mm-hmm.
So it's kinda like.
Or like in Back to the Future, same thing.
Yeah, but are you gonna, are you gonna, yeah, but it's like, are you going to like?
Marty McFly did the same thing.
But it's like, yeah, is there, is there some kind of like destiny, I guess, where you're gonna arrive regardless of what actions you take? But then is there consequences for the free will of your decisions?
Both, both and all.
Both at the same time?
Both and all at the same time, yeah. And I think that your destiny can change based off of your path. That gets into another, a whole other convo, but like.
That's what I'm saying.
There's a lot of people that believe that like, there's, that there's like many versions of you happening all at the same time. Like, you know, you take a little path and now you're on these multiple like dimensions.
Right.
Simultaneously happening all at the same time, yeah. Like quantum physics or like time, it's not linear, it's all around.
Or maybe you arrive at the same spot, but how you got there was different with your choice and one was harder than the other.
Yeah, multiple little versions. Be like in Stranger Things, there's that underworld shit going down.
I just read a book called Midnight Library. And then, uh, that was like a kinda concept of the one girl that tried to commit suicide, go to like a library. And then she has a whole bunch of book of the different kind of the life decisions she made. She was like a rock star. She was a, a scientist. She was like a happy wife or happy mom and then all sorts of stuff. She lives in that, like a life, but she comes back to that, like, you know? And then like, it was kinda eye opening to me like, cuz like, and I guess like a spoiler alert, but like, you know, it's just like, she's not happy. And then like she, like a library crashes and their o- only book, what was left was when she committed to suicide.
Oh, like means it altered.
Yeah, she can't make it, she can't make it happy, completely happiness for herself because that wasn't true life. It was all imagination, but she had to go back to the life she already had. So like, it was kinda like.
Watch this. Yeah.
Yeah, that was like a, that was a great book. And then like it ma- made me thought about a bunch of things because I went back to Japan. Like, you know, a couple of weeks ago. And then like I thought about it too, like what if I stay there? Like what kinda life I have? And then like, you know, like, okay, what if, what if I didn't start a business? You know, all kinda stuff happens, but it is what it is.
It is what it is. Yeah, you do your steps.
You know, and they just.
Yeah. I mean, that's similar to that movie, um, and I, I probably need to watch it like four more times, wrap my head around, around it, but the everything all at once, or everywhere all at once. It won all the Golden Globes.
I've heard of that, yeah, I know.
It is similar to everything we're talking about, how it's, you kinda have a soul contract and then you come to earth and then you can have multiple versions of yourself happening all at once. Yeah. And it's about a mother and a daughter and the father, and that they're all kinda connected on a bigger plane, yeah.
Make that movie out of them.
If you haven't seen it, you need to see it, but you have to really sit down and watch it. It's, yeah.
There's a, not to make this like a Bible study, there's a book in the Old Testament, it's called Ecclesiastes. And what it's about is it's not a preachy storybook. It's literally where a king was in his nineties and he knew he wasn't gonna live much longer. And he sat down and wrote random sentences about everything he thought.
Yeah, familiar with it, yeah.
Yeah, like wisdom things, just one sentence long, no, no coherency of like, they're all tied. It was just, he would just say things and a lot of, a lot of them did.
It was like life lessons, right?
Yeah, and he would just say like, that makes no sense sometimes why. Well, he would say things like, you know, the rich man and the poor man will both eventually end up in the same spot, six feet under the ground. Um, and one of them, he said too, is he says, you know, there have been kings who have lived that we have all forgotten and we don't even know they existed. And if that's gonna happen to them, the world is definitely gonna forget about you.
That's in the Old Testament?
Yeah, and I was like, dang.
That's in the Old Testament.
Yeah, he's like, the world's gonna forget about you. Because, and what his point was is like, he was lamenting on the fact that he, he had a phrase in that same book that said, anything my mind imagined, I could put before my eyes. Cuz he had trillions of dollars in today's money. So he could build anything he wanted. And then he would switch over to food. And then after he got burnt out on switching over to food, he'd switch over to lusting and he got burnt out on that. He could do anything he wanted with trillions of dollars. And, um.
He struggled to find his own happiness.
Yeah, that's what the whole thing was about. And the repetitive theme in it is vanity, vanity, all is vanity, it's worthless. It was really like a depressing, he was lamenting after all this stuff.
Yeah.
But yeah, but he was just saying like fame was one too. And then one of his little.
Cuz he was at one point probably the most powerful man in the world.
Yeah, and one of his phrases were like, if, if there's been kings around that we don't even reme- literally, nobody knows they ever existed.
Yeah.
Um, it's gonna forget about you too. So just think about that when you're like trying to leave a legacy.
Take it, take it easy, bro.
When it's like trying to like.
Wow, yeah. It also means find your happiness, not in, not in legacy.
That's what it was about. That's, that's what a lot of it was about, was like, he was, he tried to find happiness in all of these material things. And he'd move on to something else and he never could find it in any of those things.
Right.
But it's just a series of random things.
However, though, he's saying all that as he has his own book in the Old Testament of the largest soul book in the history of the, of the Bible.
There are only some people who are remembered forever, yeah.
And that is preached to in churches all across the world.
Nobody's gonna be remembered, but he is.
Yes.
Yeah. But I understand what he means there.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
It's true, yeah.
But the irony is he is.
You are famous. Solomon who's wrote it, yeah.
Yeah. You are, you're, you're, your chapter's literally worshipped by millions of people.
Right, 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 right. But that's, but that's what all it is, is someone would just be a sentence long, or maybe just a paragraph. But there's random wisdom things that he had learned through being king for all those years. That's all it's about.
That's pretty great.
Yeah. So if you're ever in like a wisdom phase of, but don't read it if you're in a depressing state though.
Cuz it is.
Cuz it will add to it.